City Council on Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Sheldon is absent.
Okay, and if you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay, that brings us to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. But please understand that because it's not on the agenda, we're not able to deliberate or take any action this evening. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody who wants to address the council?
You had no speaker requests submitted from the audience, but you have one emailed comments that I would read into the record. It is from Flora Wong, and she writes, Honorable City Council, elected officials, et cetera. My name is Flora Wong. I'm strongly opposed to state measure 16, also known as Prop 16. State measure 16 is identity politics in its ultimate form. It punishes some people based on their blood and rewards some people based on their blood. Where is equal opportunity for all? It gives rise to resentment and conflict between different ethnic groups, discourages hardworking ethics, and eventually takes down the living standard of all people, including those it claims to help. Thanks, Flora Wong, a very concerned citizen.
Okay, thank you. We will know the results of that a week from today. Next item, please.
Okay, your first item this evening is scheduled presentation item number one. This is a presentation regarding the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and the Groundwater Sustainability Plan.
Good evening, Marcus.
Good evening. Mayor Aquino, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. Tonight, we have a brief presentation about the city's role in the South American Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan update. John Woodling from the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority is on the line this evening to provide this briefing. And we also have Todd Eisen on the line, who is the current Chair of the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority. So we'll give an update as to the city's role in the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority, and then just what recent legislative actions on groundwater, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, have for the South American River, South American Sub Basin.
Can I just clarify that this means south of the American River, not South America?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, I will turn it over to John Woodling. And John, just so you know, I will be scrolling through the presentation here at City Council meeting.
All right, thank you, Director Yasutaki. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. And yes, this is south of the American River. I will not be presenting in Spanish or Portuguese today. On page nine of your packet, first slide, I want to direct your attention to the left side. And you see the names of five agencies there. And we'll get into that further, but those are the five groundwater sustainability agencies within the South American Sub Basin, who will ultimately have to adopt the plan that is developed over the course of the next about 14 months. I'll give the next slide. I will be brief, and there's about seven topics here I'll cover. Some of this will be review for many of you, some of it will be new for others. We'll go through it very quickly and let our questions at the end. We can take the time there. As many of you probably know, the Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority was formed in 2006, and it's one of the outcomes of the groundwater management element of the Water Forum Agreement. And the SCGA is formed as a joint powers agreement among the County of Sacramento and four cities south of the American River, between the American and the Casumis in Sacramento County. It currently has a 16-member Board of Directors, including all of the municipal and agricultural water suppliers, and then independent seats for self-supplied agriculture, ag-residential, conservation landowners, self-supplied industry. You will be seeing JPA amendments for SCGA, probably not later this year, but probably January or February. And the board seats will actually be reduced by two. And when we get to the map of the basin, we'll talk about why that is. So the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA, was passed in 2014, and it's really the first time that there's mandatory groundwater management in California. It requires a number of things: creation of a groundwater sustainability agency. And as I said, there were five created in this sub basin. Completion of a groundwater sustainability plan, and that's what we're working on now, and I'll focus the presentation on. And then ultimately, after completion of that plan in 2022, achieving sustainability over a 20-year period up to 2042. Failure to comply really means a loss of local control and local management of groundwater, with state intervention in the management and state fees paid for the benefit of that service. If we go to Slide 5, Page 13 of the packet, this is the outline of the South American Sub Basin. It extends from the American River up to the Casumis River, bounded on the west by the Sacramento River, and then on the east where alluvial sediment to the groundwater basin hit the foothills. You can see Folsom up on the upper right corner of the basin. The Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority covers most of the sub basin. In the southwest, the Northern Delta Groundwater Sustainability Agency in purple, and then a number of other reclamation districts that are affiliated with the Northern Delta Group. The yellow is a very small part of the county that has no other water agency of any kind. So the county is the GSA there. Then the orange is Ovuchamni-Hartnell Water District, and then the pink, Slough House Resource Conservation District. So those are the five groundwater sustainability agencies. And as a part of this development of the SIGMA, the Ovuchamni-Hartnell Water District and Rancho Murrieta, which is located near the southern end of this pink Slough House area, got out of SCGA for management of groundwater and will be independent. So that's the reason for the 16 down to 14 on the board seats that will be coming to you as JPA amendments. So as I said, the deadline for the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, or GFC, is January 31st, 2022. We've been working since about March, when we got consultants on board. And I actually came on as interim Executive Director officially in July. So we're in the beginning steps developing the groundwater model to both understand baseline conditions, but also be able to model future scenarios, developing the monitoring network, which will largely be monitoring of existing wells, and then developing sustainable management criteria. And I'll talk a little bit more about what those are. We'll move into the beginning of next year, developing the projects and actions that will be a part of the plan going forward, and then drafting the document, with ultimately a fairly long period of public review and comment, and then adoption by those five agency boards before the deadline in January of 2022. So the Groundwater Sustainability Plan really has five major parts: an introductory chapter that lays out the purpose, a section on the plan area, the basin setting, the subsurface geology, the hydrology, the water resources, the baseline water budget, and then projections forward for 15 years in the water budget with presumed growth, presumed changes in land use. Sustainable management criteria are a key piece, because this is really how we demonstrate sustainability. And then we'll identify projects and management actions that will allow us to achieve that sustainability, and as well as an implementation plan, which will include a finance plan for how to operate for the next 20 years. So sustainability and sustainable management criteria are really at the heart of SIGMA and the way the state frames its law. There really are six things that are used as measures of sustainability. One of those is seawater intrusion, which we don't really have to worry about in our areas. So we really have five to contend with. And in addition, land subsidence. In both the North American and South American subbasins, we don't have extensive and thick clays in the subsurface. So we aren't really prone to subsidence with groundwater pumping. So we will have to monitor and do a minimum level of monitoring, but in general, subsidence is not a concern as well. So we're left with managing water quality, managing reduction of storage and lowering of groundwater levels, and then managing surface water depletion that is caused by groundwater pumping. And that's really key for both the American River and the Casumis River that bound the two ends of the sub basin, to understand the interaction of the groundwater pumping and the surface water, and not affect surface water rights, but also not affect in-stream uses of the surface water. So for each of those sustainable management criteria, we have to identify objective and quantifiable measures of sustainability. And so you see, for lowering groundwater levels, we'll identify a measurable objective, and that's really a range under which we want to maintain groundwater levels going forward. Then we'll also identify what's called a minimum threshold. So that's a level of groundwater below which we can't drop, or we won't meet our sustainability goal. And the definition of sustainability is really a significant and unreasonable impact on any of the beneficial uses of groundwater. So this step of defining these quantifiable metrics for each of the, really, four conditions that we have to monitor is the place we're in right now. And these are based on evaluation of a lot of data, but they become value judgments. They become kind of subjective. And that's really the purpose of that Groundwater Sustainability Plan Working Group we put together, to really define what do we mean by significant and unreasonable with our basin. And then going forward, monitoring is really the key to SIGMA. We'll need to have a monitoring network where we can measure groundwater levels, measure water quality, and identify that we're meeting those minimum thresholds going forward. So it's really, we do a lot of modeling and projection to come up with our plan, but really compliance is based on objective measurements in the field. If we find that our basin is currently unsustainable, or might be unsustainable in the future, meaning we're taking out more water than is recharging either naturally or artificially, we need to have some projects and management actions. How are we going to make the basin sustainable? And those really can be a balance between two sides. New sources of supply, such as replacement of groundwater with surface water, groundwater recharge projects, or managing demand. And in some basins down in the San Joaquin Valley, you've probably heard about pumping allocations, being put on farmers, land going out of production. You don't expect that's what's going to happen in our sub basin. We expect to be able to manage the basin on the supply side going forward. Unlike a lot of regulatory programs in the state that require public hearings and require public notice in the newspaper and whatnot, SIGMA is really focused on public outreach and going way beyond just letting the public know something's happening. Requires a lot of outreach to anybody who might be impacted, to every beneficial user of the groundwater. So one of the first steps we did as the GSP Working Group was develop a communication and engagement plan. Identified the key groups that are interested, and identified a bunch of steps we're going to take to make sure we do sufficient outreach. In addition to monthly meetings of the GSP Working Group, which are open to the public, we have had one and have another next Thursday, November 5th, a public meeting. It'll be online, virtual. We've got a website developed where people can find out any information they need to find out, find out what meetings are going on, and also register, so they get the information pushed out to them. The GSA boards, the five boards, all have public meetings. They're public entities, so any actions they take on the Groundwater Sustainability Plan will be public. We're holding meetings with the basins adjacent to us. So we're in communication on what's going on, on either side of that boundary, so we're not impacting each other. And then we'll be holding a number of meetings with more targeted stakeholder groups, like the ag-res community, like the operators of some of the remediation sites and others. So we saw the map, and we saw Folsom up there in the corner. And Folsom is not a major user of groundwater in the basin. So you might ask, so what does all this mean for Folsom? I think primarily, sustainable management of the groundwater, I think, improves the reliability of all the regional water supplies. We've, over time, all agencies have expanded their conducive use programs, management of surface water and groundwater in coordination. We're increasingly interconnecting the water systems. So I think sustainable groundwater as a backstop for what may become increasingly uncertain surface water is good for everybody. Another outcome is we maintain local control of the water resources. We comply with SIGMA. We don't have state intervention in our groundwater. And then finally, as we go forward and have an implementation plan and a finance plan, the SCGA costs will increasingly be covered by the agricultural and ag-res users, other self-supplied users, who up to now haven't really covered that share of the cost in proportion to their pumping amount. As we go forward, we're expecting to collect fees on those users to fund SCGA going into SIGMA implementation. And I'll close there and answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, John. Carrie or Andy, do you have any questions for John or Todd, who's also on the line?
No, thanks. Some good presentation.
Yep, I remember when this was starting up before I left, so yeah, yeah, neat to see it come along. So thank you.
Mike, you have any questions for John or Todd?
No, thorough presentation, thank you.
Okay. And Marcus, you represent the city on the JPA, is that correct?
Todd Eisen does.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So he is the board chair last year and this year.
Okay, great. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Todd.
Next item, please.
Okay, your next item is scheduled presentation item number two, copper pipe pinhole leak investigation. And this is an update.
Good evening, Mayor Aquino, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. Tonight, have a presentation on the Black and Beach and Virginia Tech findings that came in their technical memorandum for about a week and a half ago. So for those maybe following online, I will now be on page 26 of the agenda packet. And the consultant analysis, just wanted to, you know, refresh of what the two consultants were doing. Black and Beach was really looking at water quality parameters for the city, looking at 10 years' worth of city data, looking at the information that we provided from state and federal regulatory requirements. Are we meeting federal and state drinking water standards? And then the last bullet under there is specifically a lead and copper rule, which came out in 1986. Then the second part of that team, which is Virginia Tech, they were performing the physical pipe forensics analysis. And so they were looking at the pipe scale imagery, identifying and determining the associated elemental composition of the pipe scale. So what was physically making up the pipe scale that they found inside the pipes that we sent to them? And then identifying, okay, what percentage of those elements are found in their analysis? So page 27, just wanted to focus on the lead and copper rule. Again, as I mentioned, goes back to the 1986 Safe Drinking Water Act, and was put in place to have essentially lead-free plumbing in drinking water systems. And what that means, at that time, it was less than 8% of lead content. In 1991, that rule was updated, so, or sorry, not 1991, but that was the lead and copper rule was enacted. And this was to ensure that water agencies, water districts, et cetera, were not having any lead or copper leaching into the drinking water. We typically, you would not find that in your system. Most of the time, it was in the private systems where this was occurring because there was lead, or in many cases, copper pipe on the private side or in buildings. For the city, we were required to sample for 30 homes that were built before 1986. So trying to catch that timeframe when the current rule was not in place. What we did, though, is we selected 50 homes at the time, just to ensure we were getting enough homes and a good representative sample across the city in those areas that had homes built prior to 1986. In 2014, the lead and copper rule was updated to have any plumbing to have less than 0.2% lead content. So it was a significant difference from the 8% down to 0.2% in terms of what manufacturers could use or have as a lead content within any plumbing devices. So this could be pipe fittings, flux, meters, you know, anything that was related to plumbing had to be less than 0.2% by lead content. And because we were doing so well, the city was doing very well in the lead and copper rule analysis, we actually were allowed to do triennial reporting. So we got onto a list where you can do reporting or testing every three years. Otherwise, you're doing it every year, but we were able to get to every three years because our results came back very positive. And I'll show you, not positive in cases, but good results for the city. And that's shown on page 28 of what the lead and copper results. So on the left-hand side, those are the copper results, and on the right-hand side, those are the lead results. And the way that the rule's written is that the action level for each is listed 1.3 milligrams per liter or parts per million for copper, and then lead, 0.015 milligrams per liter or parts per million. And you can see on the graphs, the yellowish-orange color, just for the years that are identified along the bottom, just identifies what concentration levels we received for those that did have results. So it's the 90th percentile of the results. And you can see in the recent results for lead, or sorry, for copper in 2017, and then this year in 2020, are non-detects. And what that means is that all the results that we got back to us in that 90th percentile show that we did not, or the lab analysis showed that there was no copper in the lab results. If you look at lead, you can see there are many of the non-detects, which is very good. And, you know, we did, you could see the last four rounds, 2011, 2014, 2017, and 2020, we did see non-detects for the last four rounds. And I would anticipate moving forward, this is what we would continue to see because either the plumbing's been replaced, or there wasn't a lead content that was detected from those homes built before 1986. So it could be a combination of things, the plumbing at the time, or just a replacement of plumbing fixtures, or plumbing inside those homes. So the next slide, page 29, is the analysis, or the parameters, some of the key parameters that Black and Beach was looking at from the historic data from 2010 all the way to about July of 2020. So we were able to provide, you know, all the testing, all the results that we had. So you can look on the left-hand side, and it identifies the analytics, the pH, the alkalinity, all the way down to total organic carbon. And then there's this Langlier Saturation Index. And this table just identifies the minimums, the average, and the max. And then on the right-hand side, there's a column labeled Secondary MCL. And what that means is a secondary maximum contaminant level. These are levels that are issued by the Environmental Protection Agency, and those in which we have to test for. These are mainly kind of taste and odor type of water quality parameters. These aren't health and safety type of parameters. Those are the, those are found under the maximum contaminant levels under the primary drinking water standards. And those are a different set of water quality parameters. But those are more of the health-related parameters, where the secondary MCL, in this case, are more taste, odor, aesthetics type of parameters. I do want to point out that chlorine residual is not a secondary MCL. That has its own maximum residual disinfectant level under the primary drinking water standards, but just wanted to list this because that is something, obviously, that they were looking at. And four parts per million is the max. I also want to point out that in this pH column, that the max they found was 10.4 in our records. And I just want to identify that what happens is when our staff takes the analyzer probe offline and calibrates that piece of equipment or that probe, what they do is there's a solution in a bottle that's untampered, and you put the probe in that solution. That solution's already set at a pH of 10.4. And so what staff will do is identify, okay, we put it in a known solution of 10.4 pH units. What is the device reading? And if it's reading 10.41, or 10.405, or 10.398, something right around 10.4, we know the device is working fairly accurately. And what happens when you go and then put that probe back online, it still has a 10.4 something reading or a high 9 reading. And so that is what we're finding here, is that when the probe was returned back online, the first reading that is collected to the database is the last reading that was in, when that probe was in the solution. So I just want to point out, that's how this max number gets in there.
Marcus, does that also influence the 95th percentile number, because the 10.45's in there?
It likely did, but there is very few of the 10.4 numbers in there. But yes, if you took those out, that would probably reduce that number slightly. Page 30 of the agenda packet is just some of the findings from Black and Beach. They did see, obviously, the pH in the eight to nine range, a low of six, a high of, should be 10.45, but that's the number that was referenced on the previous page. They did identify the source water as very pure in terms of low alkalinity, low hardness, low calcium, low total dissolved solids. Chlorine residuals leaving the treatment plant were sufficient to maintain the requirement within the distribution system, and that requirement is to be 0.5 parts per million or above. So leaving the treatment plant at around 1.1 is sufficient to maintain that residual throughout the system to the furthest end of the system. Again, they did identify, as I mentioned at the last meeting, limited buffering capacity of the city's finished water, just due to that source water purity. I will talk about that a little more. And then the Langlier Saturation Index, which can be used as an indicator, aggressiveness indicator, or corrosion indicator for water, and then the appropriateness to use that as a pH adjustment. And so that identifies just their findings. Page 31, in terms of buffer capacity, really, it describes the water's ability to resist any changes in pH due to the city's, the purity of the city's water. A small dosage of lime, in this case, for the city, because that's what we use as a pH adjustment, a small dosage, only a small dosage is needed to increase the pH units of the city's water. The treatment pH adjustment is based on this Langlier Saturation Index. The average is negative 1.2 of the city's finished water. And I'll discuss that a little more in the next, the next page or the next slide. This is used as a lime adjustment, and you add more lime if you want to keep the LSI from decreasing. And then, as Black and Beach had mentioned, we have been successful in meeting lead and copper rule requirements. And so pH adjustment, alkalinity adjustment, which lime, in this case, for the city, works as a corrosion inhibitor. The next slide, or page 32, is the Langlier Saturation Index. And again, it is, this is an indicator that's used to adjust finished water quality parameters. It's used, the lab results use pH, alkalinity, calcium, total dissolved solids, and temperature. All that gets put into an equation, and the LSI, or the Langlier Saturation Index, number is calculated. And again, so because of the city's source water, already... And again, so because of the city's source water already coming in, the alkalinity, calcium and total dissolved solids are pretty low. So the results you get from a LSI index is a negative number. And a negative number identifies that the water is deficient in minerals, which based on all the analysis and the results we get, that would be the case. If you were to get a positive LSI, that means the water can be oversaturated with minerals. So it has more minerals in the water than beyond the saturation point. A neutral LSI is typically in the range of 0.5 to a negative 0.5. So that's kind of your neutral range. Again, the city average is, is negative 1.2. And on the next slide, I'll ju- I'll talk about how that factors into the pH adjustment. So this is page 33 of the staff report or the agenda packet. And we did, in the analysis, observe pH fluctuations. And you will have seasonal fluctuations. In the summer, the pH is lower, in the winter typically have a pyre, higher pH in the source water. So the raw water coming from Folsom Reservoir. System pH can become variable as well. So after the city adjusts the pH at the water treatment plant, the finished water, once it leaves the treatment plant and gets into the distribution system, can become variable. So that can be affected by water temperature, interaction with pipe surfaces. So pipe surfaces that have cement or mortar lining can cause the, the pH to change. And then one thing that was identified for us is that you can, if you have residual lime in your distribution system reservoirs, when the water gets out to that distribution system reservoir, it can still mix and interact with the lime that has settled out in, in the distribution system tanks. So you, so that can have an adjustment or that can adjust the pH as well when it's out in the distribution system. The finished water fluctuations that we began to see were in the 2017 timeframe, probably June or July timeframe when, when we started to see that. One thing I do want to point out is in, it should be 2015 was the official date. 2015, the city was issued a permit amendment for our treatment operations. And the permit application, amendment application actually started in 2007. So it took about nine, 10 years to get, to get the permit amendment. In the permit amendment, there's an engineer's report that is developed by the Division of Drinking Water. And that's attached to the permit amendment. The permit amendment and the permit itself are what the State Water Board, Division of Drinking Water can actually hold you to. So that identifies kind of the wherethes and the titles and the various rules and regulations that you as a water system need to meet. The engineering report just expands on different parts of your treatment process. And in this case, the treatment process identified adjusting pH based on the Langlier Saturation Index or LSI. And so what that means, and, and I explained it a little bit at the last meeting, is the more negative the LSI, you would dose higher for lime to increase the pH to try to get that LSI number less negative. That's, you know, how, how it works. Finished water pH is typically around eight and a half. But then, like I said, we saw those adjustments. And then because of the LSI and the low buffering capacity of the water itself, this can cause the pH to become more variable. And that's what Black and Beach found looking at the historic water quality data. Page 34 is the pipe scale analysis. So now we're transitioning from the work for Black and Beach did to what Virginia Tech physically did in the lab. Eight pipe samples were delivered to Virginia Tech. They physically conducted tests on, I, I guess I'll read this, but inductively coupled plasma mass spectrometry or ICPMS, electron scanning microscopy with X-ray energy dispersive system EMS-EDS. And, and basically again, goes back to identifying what the pipe scale composition was made of. And then the percentage of that pipe scale or the elements within that pipe scale. So it, it shows the, the, the composition of the pits essentially and the percent composition by weight. They did conduct a sulfide spot test just to rule out that there was not any sulfide reducing bacteria. And they were also able to rule out that the, the copper itself was not defectively thin from just a, a manufacturing standpoint. It was within all the parameters that you would expect for a pipe that was 30 to 40 years old or a copper pipe, 30 to 40 years old. Page 35 is the, the copper pitting. Again, it was identified that they were localized at specific sites. So this was not, you know, 10, 12, 18 inches inside the pipe. They were very localized, small areas within the pipe. And, and some had multiple small, specific sites within the pipe. But they were not large-scale or long longitudinal sections that you, you would find pitting. What it does physically, it involves the removal of the copper ions from that specific site. So that's what starts to create the pit on, on the inside. The scale is typically a blue-green color. So if you physically cut the pipe out and you looked inside, you, you would see a blue-green scale on the inside. The, the pit becomes more acidic when the ions are removed from the copper pipe. And the pit tries to draw in chloride and sulfite to balance the electrons. So it's, you know, kind of the chemistry side of the interaction between the water and the copper pipe. And then this process, as the consultant points out, makes the, the pit salty, which increases the corrosivity of that particular or specific site within the pipe. Page 36, these are the consultant conclusions. One, which I think is, is really important, is that the city's treated water meets state and federal regulations. So we don't have violations, we're not delivering water that is not safe and for, you know, our customers to drink, to use for, you know, everyday purposes. So that to me i- is an important finding out of all this. The lead and copper rule compliance is optimal for corrosion control as our tests indicate, which from, you know, the lead and copper sampling that we completed. Pits are, are likely copper oxide because of what they found. The majority of the percent by weight was copper within the pitting analysis.
They should have given you the chemical composition of what that oxide is.
Okay, I, we can ask for it, I don't.
Please ask for, please ask for it.
It wasn't part of the report, but we can ask for that.
That's what all that, that testing was supposed to do.
Okay, the, the next bullet is the, the copper again was the main element found in that pitting with trace amounts of other elements, including aluminum. And what Virginia Tech pointed out is that aluminum concentrations of .5% or more by weight can catalyze the copper pitting in water similar to the city's. Aluminum though is below the National Secondary Drinking Water Regulation of .2 parts per million. So our samples show, again, non-detects for aluminum in our annual samples. So we did not have any, or at least the test results that we have don't show any aluminum in our finished drinking water. I know there were some questions about microbial activity. There is no evidence of microbial activity in the analysis. And we have, you know, years' worth of microbiological tests that would back that up that we're supposed to test for from an EPA standpoint. So that was ruled out. And then again, the sulfide reducing bacteria was ruled out as a cause for the pitting. Continuing on 30, page 37 of the consultant conclusions. Again, water with low alkalinity, low calcium, a, a pH that gets above nine and free chlorine physically in the water, which we have, can contribute or could contribute to pitting with impurities in the pipe or with sediment in the pipe. And, and the last part I'll read, just because I don't have it memorized, is impurities in copper pipes are natural and could be from manufacturing, like microscopic burrs, ions other than copper included in the metal, remnants of cleaning solutions or remnants of cleaning solutions. Storage, transportation, installation and soldering could all introduce additional impurities. But research study has shown that while imperi- impurities can provide a site to start pitting, their presence is not necessary for pitting to occur in all situations. Page 38, the consultant team's recommendations. We've learned about this verbally back in September, but it was to add orthophosphate to the treatment process. This has been shown in lab results and physically in other agencies' drinking water systems to inhibit pit initiation. And this can even help slow or even mitigate pit propagation. The lime adjustment will now be at, set at a target of 8.5. We will no longer be using that lack Langlier Saturation Index to calculate a pH. The recommendation was just to set the pH at 8.5 and not make any changes to your pH and let the orthophosphate now be the corrosion inhibitor for lead and copper compliance as well as the interior coating to, again, either inhibit or mitigate pit propagation or initiation. Start with small increments of dosing for orthophosphate. So the first week, which we started on the eighth. So it took us about two and a half weeks to get everything in place. Three weeks to get everything in place from, you know, the piping, the pump feed system, getting the chemical onsite, which i- is a pretty quick turnaround time. So on the eighth of October, we started at .1 parts per million in, in the, in that first week. On the 15th, we adjusted to .2 parts per million. And then this last Thursday, so almost a week ago or five days ago, is when we started our last dosage at .3 parts per million. And that is the highest dosage we will go. What we're also doing is sampling from houses within each of the city's pressure zones because we want to make sure that the orthophosphate is reaching where it needs to be, which is obviously on the customer side. So we have, as part of our sampling plan, visiting actual houses and going inside and taking samples from inside the house. We will begin at, and it may be in December, maybe January, but a, what they call is a maintenance dose. So once we know that the .3 parts per million is fully saturated within the distribution system, we're also looking at distribution system reservoirs. We're also looking at the city's own sampling stations on, on the city supply side or on the public side. But once we're confident that the .3 parts per million has saturated and fully reached all the houses and all the, the, the buildings, we can scale back to maybe .2 or .25 parts per million. And it's just a maintenance dose just to keep the orthophosphate in the system, but it's not needed to be at the .3 dosage. It's, it's likely to be closer to .2, if not just set at .2. One thing that was recommended was to continue to sample and monitor for aluminum since that was something that was found in their pipe scale analysis was just to, to identify, okay, is there something that you might be able to point to where that might be coming from? Especially because our testing has indicated non-detects for aluminum. And so, you know, how is that finding its way into the system? Even though the tests are coming back non-detect, the lab result i- is showing something, something different in terms of finding aluminum in, in, in the pipe scale analysis. And so they did recommend just to continue, we already do, but they just can, said continue to do that and monitor just to maintain the current plan that we are on. Page 39, again, this is if you haven't reported a leak or if you want to learn more, you know, you can call our water quality division, You can call me directly, 916-461-6161. You can always email waterquality@folsom.ca.us. That email is linked to three different staff here at the city. And if they cannot respond, they usually typically forward the question to me for a response. And I can respond either directly to the person asking the question or people asking the questions, or I can respond to our staff and they will send a response on, on our behalf. We do have our, our pinhole leak webpage. So, you know, thank you to our communications team for getting this one up and running. But we do update this typically every Friday with a map. And then anytime we have a new set of questions and answers for customers or for people interested, we do put those on this webpage as well. The report is linked here as well, so the, the copy of the report is there. And again, you know, doing as much as we can from a community outreach standpoint. We, the, the last bullet here is that direct mail or survey. So we have already seen those responses start to come back into the city. I want to say that we're probably in the 40 to 50, I believe, physical hard copies that have been returned. I don't know how many yet have filled out the survey online. But we have seen responses back from, from our customers. And then obviously we're going through which one of those or of those responses. Are there any new responses that have not reported to us over the phone or through email? Or all those also, those that have reported already to the city? Because there were some, a couple of questions that we weren't asking at the beginning when we started taking information that we figured were good pieces of information to have on, on the questionnaire. So we will be obviously updating our own tables and the information that we collect. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Okay, thank you Marcus. Carrie, you have any questions? Andy? Mike, you have any questions for Marcus?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, let's, I know we have some members of the public who have signed up to speak, so let's go ahead and go to them.
Yeah, we have three members in the audience who will be speaking. So first will be Philip Miller and Philip will be followed by Rebecca Weider.
And if you come to the microphone to speak, if you would just keep your mask on for us, please, we'll be able to hear you just fine. Welcome Philip.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a homeowner for 18 years here in Folsom and have firsthand experience with the pinhole leak problem. The first thing I wanted to do was just provide a little bit of context, I think, to this because we've got a lot of scientific information that can be a little overwhelming and doesn't necessarily address the fact that we have a problem. And the problem appears to be in our water. I can, I'd also like to say that speaking of it as a pinhole leak issue kind of reduces the impact, I think. We've got a lot of residents, obviously, who are suffering from this problem, including ourselves. And I'd like to make sure that our voices are heard and that you understand what this is doing financially to the residents. We've, my family has had huge costs related to this. After our third leak, we lost our home insurance. It found it difficult to have that renewed. And the costs for us were not only going to be the immediate ones, but also ongoing costs because we're now considered a high risk for seven years for the insurance industry. So my question to the city is, are you prepared to help offset these costs? How are you going to do it? And is there going to be further investigation into the decision that apparently was made to allow our pH level to go so high? And clearly, that is a very risky practice when dealing with water. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out Philip. Next speaker.
Next is Rebecca Weider and Rebecca will be followed by Lynn Gardner.
Hi Rebecca, welcome.
Thank you, I have learned right of so.
Okay, we can hear you. Okay, we can hear you.
I'm with Pam as far as being one of the pinhole issues that's going on. It started for me in March, and I got my first one. And it, they had to tear out all of my ceilings in the hallway and part of the bedroom, and water damaged it, the wa- wall soaked overnight and dropped a very expensive concave painting on the ground. And the next day, my husband had to go in the hospital, so I had no help. Well, my husband passed away now, so I'm really alone facing this. And when I came home Friday, I have mold in my ceiling. So now they won't fix it until that's taken out, and it's another leak. So I'm really frustrated financially, this is killing me. Eye damage is fourteen thousand dollars, and that don't count the most recent one. And just the fact I had to leave my home because they found asbestos after they had to tear out all my floors. I have cement floors now. It's just, I think the city, I've been here thirty-two years, I've never seen anything like this happen. I love Folsom, I raised my son here. But I'm very fed up with the fact that nobody's seeing it's all at once. It seems like, and I, science has to be done, I understand that, but it's just common sense to me. When you've got all these thousands of people that have leaks and damage all at once, I'm sorry, science doesn't hold nothing to, for me, it's the fact that it's happening, and it's happening all at once. So I, I'm just really fed up, I just, I want to know what Folsom's going to do for me. You know, I, I got bills, I can't pay, I can't get repairs done. I have to call a plumber again coming out tomorrow because I have another leak. So I think they need to look at the people themselves and think, you know, okay, we got our scientific facts, but we also have people facts that it's happening. And it's happening to everywhere. Now, I just wanted my frustrations.
Thank you for coming out, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Next will be Lynn Gardner.
Welcome Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just threw my name in there because I, many things were already said that I was going to bring up, but it, she's got me concerned, you know, it's, it's people are really hit by this badly. Neighbors, I don't have a leak yet, neighbors all around me, leak, leak, leak. Twenty-five thousand dollars for one house, you know, it's just, I figure like I'm next. So you're, I've had plumbers coming out, give me estimates, what do I do? The orthophosphate, I had a question about that, I, I'm sorry, I'll back up a little bit. The bottom line is that they tried well, they may not have meant it, but they screwed up and our water damaged our pipes, it damaged them. So the little blue crap that's on the pipes, even though the orthophosphate may mitigate that or stop some of it, is it safe to drink the water going past what's already there in the future? How long? I mean, what are we drinking? Is, is the test from the, how many household taps, is that safe? That's the question. Anyway, it's just, it's, it's a very frustrating situation. I don't know what you would do, it, it would cost the city millions upon millions to reimburse, you know, thousands and thousands of homes, but I would like to see something come about that. A simple thing was maybe you could waive the fees for people that have pipe damage. You're still charging people fees to get your pipes fixed and inspection fees and more fees. It's like, give me a break, you know, the city caused this, let's try to help people out a little bit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. Did we have somebody who wanted to have something written to the record?
Yeah, we had a couple people submit written comments. I wanted to see, Ruth Anderson, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. If you'd like to go ahead and address the council now, you may.
Okay, I did write something because I didn't know if I was going to be able to read it, but let me go ahead and read it because I gave it some thought, and it does express what my husband and I are feeling right now. My husband and I love our adopted city. We've been here twelve years, and we chose it after a breakfast at Karen's and seeing all those happy people on their bikes. And we have just loved living here and feel very safe in our home. We bought a quote newer home because we didn't want to replace pipes or windows. And so we have felt very safe and secure. We live on Fisher Court, and COVID has really left us homebound. And so we've been feeling quite appreciative of the fact that we have a safe town and a safe home to live in since we are a high risk for COVID. But last week, we heard a hissing sound in our garage and saw water dripping onto our car. We called our plumber, he came in and looked at the green circles on our exposed copper pipes, and he said, have you heard about pinhole leaks? And my stomach just dropped, yes, I have heard about them. So the la- next six days without any water, we spent time talking with insurance. We have two kinds, the warranty and the homeowners. Neither of them will cover it. The warranty says they won't cover because it's not normal wear and tear. And the homeowners will only cover the damage caused by the leaks and not the repiping, which is about, I'm guessing, at least ten thousand dollars if we do it right now, plus all the damage that's going to come from taking, breaking through the tile in the bathrooms. And so at this point, we are crossing our fingers and hoping that we don't get a second leak. So we've chosen to repair the initial leak and hope that'll be our last. But our safe and secure home from a week ago has become less so. And I checked ceilings, I checked hallways, I checked plumbing, I listened for unusual sounds. The other day, I panicked and ran into the kitchen, I had heard water, and it was just our dishwasher. And this is what our home is now, it isn't safe. It's, it's fraught with concern and fear and indecision as we wait. So our future as homeowners is in your, is in your hands, there's nothing else that we can do. So I know that no one anticipated this issue, but we hope that the city of Folsom, that you continue to investigate and that you repair this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Before we move on to the submitted written comments, are there any other callers on the line who wanted to comment on the proper, copper pinhole leak issue? Okay, Madam Mayor, your last submitted comment on this item is from Michael Biggs. And he writes, good evening, council members, thank you for your service. At the previous meeting, the city water resources director acknowledged, A, that there are pressure surges in our water system, which I understood him to associate with when pumping stations go on and offline, and B, that pressure surges could push a developing corrosion problem over the edge. One possible explanation as to why multiple homes in one area get leaks at the relative same time. What further steps has the city taken since the previous meeting to gather data regarding pressure, pressure surges, potential impacts of pressure surges, and to gather statistically relevant changes to water bills and irrigation leaks in recent months, which could further help inform whether water pressure events have contributed to our water leak problems? Thank you, Michael Biggs.
Thank you. Marcus, can I have you come back and just answer a couple of questions, please? The first one I want you to ask is one that, that Lynn brought up. With the addition of the orthophosphate, is the water safe to drink?
Yes, that is correct. As was mentioned at the last meeting, orthophosphate is approved by the Environmental Protection Agency in their corrosion control techniques, and it is deemed safe by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration for purposes of drinking water supplies. And if, if there is of interest, those that maybe did not see the last presentation, the last presentation, I do have some tables in there that indicate the relevant comparison of how much orthophosphate the city is adding compared to, in, in, in the form of phosphorus, how much phosphorus is in some of our everyday foods. So that information is available. If, if you don't know how to find it, feel free to contact me, and I can provide that part of the presentation. But we do have two slides from the last city council meeting that does show the cities, the amount the city would have in the drinking water system relative to what is found in some everyday foods. And, and I guess just one example that I can probably give is if you had a couple apples, a cup of apples, you would need twelve gallons of water to be basically equivalent to the amount of phosphorus in milligrams that would be found. That's how much phosphorus intake you would need or would get from twelve gallons of water compared to one cup of apples.
Okay, hold on a second, Lynn. And then you want to address the comment about the pressure surges and?
Yep, so, you know, as I mentioned last time, we do know that we have, in, in one particular area, this was our zone three in Cimarron area of the, the pressure surges. So we have talked internally about what we would need to do to reduce those pressure surges. And one of the things we really talked about doing was putting in what they call pressure control valves, or, sorry, pump control valves. And so really what that would do is slow down the shutting of a valve, which would then limit and reduce the amount of that pressure surge. We just need to get, identify how much, what, replacing those would cost and then how many would need to replace out at the treatment plant. So that is one thing we've talked about doing. So it's a matter of getting that information pulled together and either purchasing those, and if we can do it as our own staff, then installing those. If not, do we need to bid a project out? Because this is all on welded steel pipe. So if your dimensions don't line up, you might have to do some additional pipe work, which wouldn't be something necessarily that our staff would do and we'd have to hire a contractor to be able to do that work if it entails welding or, or cutting steel pipe and then recoating those particular sections. So we have done that. And then what we've done since the last meeting as well, the last meeting, we looked at the three zones in particular, one, two, and three. So last week, we went out, or staff went out and put the pressure lagers in zones four, five, and six. And we will pick those up in probably another week and a half and just see if we have any of the similar pressure surges in other pressure zones within the city.
Okay. Lynn, come on back up and you can ask your question. I just want to get you on the, on the video. Wait, wait till you get up here so we capture you on the webcast.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't mean, I wasn't worried about the orthophosphate. It's fine, orthophosphate's fine, it's, I'll drink it. It's, our pipes are damaged, and then the orthophosphate's supposed to mitigate it. But the mitigation is, we still have that damage on the pipes, water's flowing through that, and we're drinking it. So that's my question, is, I have blue stuff in my pipes somewhere, I'm drinking that, is that safe, that part? Sorry.
That's okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
You know, as, as I mentioned, when the Virginia Tech team did their analysis, they did not find microbial induced bacteria or sulfide reducing bacteria in that buildup, so.
Nor, nor does our copper, nor do the copper levels anywhere in the system exceed the maximum allowable. So the water is perfectly fine. In fact, if anything, it's, right now, it appears to be too pure.
So yes, if you're asking me, can I drink the water, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Elaine, I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe for Pam, but if somebody does re-pipe their home, do they then have a city inspection? And if yes, are we charging for that?
Mayor Pam Johns, Community Development Director. Depends on the level of work, but yes, extensive plumbing work does require a permit, and we would do an inspection.
Okay, and that costs money?
Yeah, depending, it's a, generally, there's a, a flat fee or depending on the, again, the level of work and the level of inspection that needs to be done based on the scope of work. And I can certainly follow up, and we can provide that information on the, on the website for this, this effort.
Okay. And perhaps we ought to look into waiving those fees? Okay. Anybody else in the audience want to address the council on this item? Okay. I, I do want to say on behalf of the city of Folsom that we are taking the pinhole leak situation very seriously. We are all Folsom residents, we are all Folsom homeowners. We are still at least a couple of months away from seeing the full effects of the orthophosphate. We are waiting for our second report, which will be coming from HDR in the next couple of weeks. So please understand that we are moving as quickly as we can to find science-based answers. And we know that patience is very hard to find, especially in the year 2020, which has been challenging to say the least. But please know that we are very focused on this problem, and we will continue to share information and answers as soon as we have them. So thanks again for coming out tonight, you are welcome to stick around for the duration of the meeting. Next item, please, Krista.
Your next item this evening is the consent calendar.
Okay, is there anybody who wants to pull an item?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Okay, I think that takes us to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Although the traditional Veterans Day parade will not take place this year due to the pandemic, the city of Folsom will still pay tribute to the nation's veterans. On Wednesday, November eleventh, watch a Veterans Day commemoration at nine AM at www.facebook.com/folsomparksandrec. The short video will include segments from past year's parades and brief interviews with local veterans. This year's honorary grand marshal is our Vice Mayor, Ernie Sheldon, who is home today, continuing to fight his cancer battle. Ernie, our thoughts and prayers continue to be with you. Prior to Vice Mayor Sheldon's many years as a member of the Folsom City Council, he served thirty-three years in the U.S. Air Force. He retired as a much decorated lieutenant colonel with a Bronze Star, Meritorious Service Medal, and an Air Force Commendation Medal with five clusters. Vice Mayor Sheldon went on to lead the effort to expand Folsom's Veterans Day Parade, making it one of the largest in the region. He also spearheaded the planning, construction, and design of the city's Veterans Memorial in City Lions Park behind the library. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sheldon, and thank you, veterans. The Annie Moran Sports Complex reopened for public use on October nineteenth. The hours of operation are from ten AM to nine PM, Monday through Friday. Face masks or cloth face, cloth face coverings are required to enter and must be worn inside the complex, and social distancing must be maintained. Staff will be monitoring to ensure that the required COVID-19 mitigation measures are maintained at all times and will frequently sanitize high-touch areas in the facility. The sports complex currently offers drop-in table tennis, pickleball, basketball, and batting cages, and rentals for the pitching tunnel, soccer field, and basketball courts. Batting cage users must supply their own equipment, meaning bat and helmet. Now more than ever, it is important that we support our local Folsom businesses. When we shop local, we ensure the economic impact of our purchases stays local. Shopping locally supports the local economy, promotes a thriving community, and contributes to a high quality of life in Folsom. A new hashtag, #WeSupportFolsom campaign encourages shopping and dining locally and promotes all the benefits of supporting our Folsom businesses. In partnership with the Folsom Chamber of Commerce, we launched a new website at wwwwesupportfolsom.com. Stay tuned for citywide promotions, videos, social media, challenge, shopping challenges, and more, all designed to encourage all of us to spend our dollars where our heart is, which is right here in Folsom. And finally, the Sacramento chapter of the American Public Works Association, the APWA, selected Folsom's Oak Parkway Trail Undercrossing as the 2020 Project of the Year in the Parks and Trails category. The annual APWA Awards Program recognizes public works projects that demonstrate overall excellence. that demonstrate overall excellence in project administration, design, sustainability, community relations, relations, and construction. The city opened the Oak Parkway Trail Undercrossing for public use in fall of 2019. It provides a seamless and safe route for trail users to transition between two of the city's major trailways, the Oak Parkway and the Johnny Cash Trail. So thank you to everyone that worked on that project, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Andy, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just continuing to wish Ernie the best, as our city manager just did as well. And just the only other thing is, as we know, next week at this time, we'll be getting some results from our, our current election season here. And I just want to wish all the candidates in this election cycle the very best. And related to our very local election here, just a question, is the plan, and I know this has been in the past, is the swearing in for the new council members the Monday before the first?
Monday, December 7th, right?
December 7th. Do we have a time for that yet? I know that we kind of moved that around a little bit.
We have it set for 5:30.
Okay, very good. So 5:30, December 7th will be the swearing in. So I guess that's when I'll be sworn out.
That could happen to you at any time, Andy.
But again, you know, all the best, you know, anyone who's gone through a campaign knows that that is a tremendous amount of work. And I see a lot of work by a lot of our local candidates, so I just want to wish them the best. I know it's a trying time. With that, good evening.
Thank you. Mike, you got any comments?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Carrie.
Just an update on other regional boards and commissions. Things are going really well at Regional Sanitation District. There's no problems, the district is financially secure. At the RT Board Meeting, which we held via WebEx last night, things are also going as well as can be expected at RT. They presented their five-year plan, strategic plan, last night. Discussion about a lot of different, a lot of different changes to the system over time with the, the lower flooring, light rail vehicles coming into play, some safety improvements that they're going to make at the stations that affect not only the safety at the stations, but, but ridership as well, making announcements, warning people that the, you know, the train is about to leave the station, those sorts of things. And a decision was made to not change the way the attorney for the, for regional transit operates within the system. There was talk about making it a contract position, and that was being pushed more by the city of Sacramento, and the suburbs didn't seem to agree with that. So that system is going to remain as it, as it has been. And I'm really, really thrilled with some of the consent items that we had on our calendar tonight. And this relates to the Southeast Connector, that Connector JPA meeting was last Friday. And we have a contract moving forward for the next segment that came in significantly under the estimate. So that's, it was a good bidding climate, and that was a little bit surprising. But the good news is that that contract should be signed within the next couple of weeks. And we're hoping at some point that we can have like a groundbreaking, and if the weather holds, we will be, we will likely be under construction this winter.
Carrie, could you remind everybody what segment that is exactly?
I can't remember the segment number, but it's basically going to go from effectively the Eldorado County line down to Prairie City. And that will include the installation of a signal at East Bidwell, formerly Scott Road, and White Rock, which means that will eliminate, based on what we talked about in the general plan update and the traffic numbers, that is the biggest delay point during the morning and mostly in the afternoon commute, with people coming off of White Rock and turning left onto East Bidwell, going toward Costco. With the current stop sign, every single vehicle must stop there, so there, quite a queue develops. Once that light is installed, that will make traffic movements through that intersection move much more freely, so that will be a, a very, very good thing. The safety along that, that portion of the roadway will be increased, and basically, the, the Folsom segment of the Southeast Connector will effectively be complete once this construction is, is done. So we're ahead of the entire region on this, and I'm really happy that we're moving in that direction.
This is segment D3.
And with regard to, I guess I gave, I gave my own segue into my traffic report. Please, the stop sign applies to you, the red light applies to you. And if you're in that much of a rush, you should have left 10 minutes earlier, or get there five minutes late, at least you'll get there safely, and avoid hitting the other person who was leaving 10 minutes earlier. So it's, it's getting dark earlier, the clocks are changing. Halloween is this weekend, please drive safely. I'm not sure what people are going to be doing with regard to trick or treating, although I did see a demon walking around the neighborhood here this morning with a sickle and the whole nine yards. So I don't know if that was supposed to portend more bad things, but. And we also have the second, this rarely happens, but the second full moon in one month happens on Halloween night. And again, as Andy said, best wishes to all the people that are, that are running for council, and Lord help us all that the, you know, things go well at the, at the national level, and that it, at least it's over.
So, you know, I feel like I've been hearing about the Capital Southeast Connector for a long time, and I've only been on the council since 2018. And I know that Joint Powers Authority was formed in 2006, so I can't imagine how thrilled you are.
And it was being talked about long before that was formed.
But how thrilled you are, and our public works staff must be, now that we're at the point where we're approving contracts for design.
Dave's probably home doing backflips right now.
So, you know, I just want to say on behalf of the residents of Folsom, who will eventually use that connector, I want to thank the JPA Board of Directors and all of their staffs for the many, many hours that you guys have put into this project. And I think the final product will be a great testament to what can be done when we work collaboratively with our, with our neighboring jurisdictions. So thank you, Carrie, and Dave, and all of his team. I also wanted to say, Ernie, we're thinking about you, and we, we hope to have you back here soon with us. And good luck to all seven candidates. Thank you for being willing to stick your neck out and run for elected office. As I said in a post the other day, you have to have three things, in my opinion, to, to be in elected office. You have to have a backbone, thick skin, and broad shoulders. You need all three of those things. So if you haven't voted yet, please vote. And it is 7:47, and we are adjourned.